Weird.
Oh, the microphone is muted there. The reason why he thinks he needs to be zooming in is because he has documents that we might not have, that he's going to put up. That's the only thing.
He said he can hear us.
Okay.
I can't control my mic.
Oh.
Okay.
I just talked.
Oh.
Maybe. I cannot control my mic. I just said he's turning the mics on now, so.
Should we tell him that he should become the host? Where'd he go?
Everything's on if he can't hear us, then I don't know what to do.
Oh, Kareen, he's here.
He said he just can't control his mic.
Well, it was muted until just a minute ago.
You should totally be able to.
This gentleman here was just saying that maybe if you take over as the host. Yeah, if you remotely log in when you're the host, maybe that's the issue.
Hello, hello? Tell what he needs to do.
No, he's.
Yeah, I apologize.
So we're on live right now, though, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, well.
I'll work from behind and see if anything changes.
Okay.
It is 7:03. You guys want to start?
Yes, let's start.
He can hear us if that's it.
Yes. Good evening and welcome to the December 16th. Welcome to the December 16th zoning board of appeal hearing. I will start off by introducing the board members. To my far right is Jeff Sauer. To my right is our clerk, Ken Scholz. To my left is Ken Jarvinian, and to my far left is John Bowner. My name is Kareen Darty. I am the chair. And attempting to remotely access the meeting is Brian Zickelli, who is our planning director. Both of the docket items tonight are continued cases, so it's the same procedure as the last time you were here. The clerk will read your case. You will proceed to the microphone and provide any additional or new information that you might have since the last time you were here. And I think, just to kind of expedite matters, why don't we take 116 Burley Street first? Only because his is going to be a brief, like a brief overview of his change. And I don't think Mr. Zickelli has any documents to either show or describe.
Madam Chair, just a reminder to have the applicant announce their name.
Oh, yes. Well, Ken is going to read the case first.
Okay, our first case is 116 Burley Street, zoned R3. Request a variance to construct an addition that will be 17 foot 9 inches from the side property line where 20 feet is required. The request is made by Dan and Jess Slattery, docket 24-5090.
Yes, so I'm Dan Slattery, one of the owners. In the last meeting, I got approval for 18 feet. We, I apologize, we had to come up with the math on the fly. I was not prepared. So I went back to the assessor and had him double-check the architect's drawings, and with the eve, it is 17.9. So that is what I'm looking for, for approval. And the only revised document is the revised plot plan that you have in front of you that mentions a 17.9.
Okay. Jeff, any questions?
I have no questions.
Ken?
I have no questions.
Ken?
I have no questions.
John?
And just a clarification, and I think this is for my fellow board members as well. We're talking about 17.9 feet.
Correct.
Not 17 feet 9 inches, just so we're all clear. And so aisles I have is your prior drawing, but I'm assuming the electronic packet that was filed with the town now reflects that 17.9 feet. Very good. No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just have one question before we go, before we do our deliberations. Have you actually pulled the permit? I knew that you started the work, but have you pulled the permit yet?
Not yet.
Okay. And the permit was going to say the 17.9, correct? Okay. All right. That was my only question.
Thank you for your patience, hon.
Okay. Jeff, will you vote for this?
I will vote for this.
No, no, stay back there. Sorry. Okay, thanks, Jeff. Ken?
And I will vote for this.
Ken?
I'll vote for this.
John?
Yes, I'll vote in favor of this application.
Yes, and I will vote in favor of this also. So.
Madam Chair, I would move that we make a motion at 116 Burley Street, docket 24-5090, to issue a variance to construct an addition that will be 17.9 feet from the side property line. Can, excuse me, can you hold your comments? Thanks. From the side property line where 20 feet is required and that adjacent properties would not be adversely impacted. The reduced dimensions would not be detrimental to the public good and would not substantially deviate from the intent or purpose of this bylaw.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You are all set. Good luck.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All set?
All set.
Our next case is 48 North Putnam Street, zoned R1. Requesting a finding on the table one of the Denver zoning bylaw to expand an existing non-conforming use as a personal training facility into the remainder of the building, where currently only half of the building is allowed to operate as a gym. The request is made by Ralph Giang Gregorio, docket 24-5083.
Could you go to the microphone, please? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, you can proceed.
Yeah, I don't know if Brian is over here, because he also had pictures.
He has them up.
Oh.
Well, he can hear us, but he can't talk to us, but he has the pictures for us.
Okay.
So he's posting the pictures now, so why don't you continue with what you've done since the last meeting?
What I've done, actually the first thing, instead of doing the paperwork and bring it in, I went forward, I lined everything up, as you can see. You know, made five, six parking spot compact cars, and then we did the alleyway. We put in two parking spots right in front of the building and two parking spots as you come out on your right-hand side. So far, we had about 15 cars off the street, and everybody was perfect. Was no issue whatsoever.
Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would go out to Brian or ask to go out to Brian, but I don't think we can.
I don't think he can.
So I guess I'm going to ask you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe at the last meeting, we asked for an official, officially drawn parking plan. Is that correct? I just don't have the minutes in front of me to be able to reflect that, so I'm just trying to.
We asked, right, we asked for basically an engineer design. Or an engineer draw.
Okay, so we did. Okay, so Mr. Ralph, because I don't want to trash your last name. We asked for that engineering drawing, but we didn't get one. Can you tell me why?
Because I did have an engineer down there, because the place is so small, and nobody wants to put a stamp on it. You know, because just like when you got two cars parked right in front of the building, and the other cars, the compact cars this way, is very tight. He said, "I cannot put a stamp on that." And what you did was good, but you need more room. In other word, I need another seven, eight feet to accommodate a stamp on that.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thanks.
Ken?
So what's the total number of parking spaces you had? You said you had 15 cars?
15, yeah.
Okay.
And he operates, which had 14, 15 people, right?
Ken?
All right, thanks.
I don't have any questions. I'll wait for comments.
Okay. Jeff?
I don't have any questions.
I'm not sure if I have any questions, but I do have some comments. One of the reasons why we wanted an engineer to do the drawings is because parking spaces are required to have certain space in between them. They're required to be certain spaces. So you can go in, and you can put lines in, and you can kind of configure your parking, but unless an engineer stamps it, it doesn't comply with the regulations. So you're saying that you have these parking spaces here.
Yeah.
But in reality, you really don't, because if they're too tight, if there isn't enough swing.
Yeah, right and.
I mean, look at this here. Like, that's kind of like a hazard there. If there was ever an emergency, like you wouldn't be able to get those cars in and out of there. And I'm sure that's what the engineer was concerned about.
Right.
So I do have that concern.
Yeah, well, the last time, when I said it to you that we're going to put a line down the middle that these people can park one behind another, because the class begins, like I said, 9 o'clock. They all leave at 10 o'clock, so it's no issue. I never seen any issue. The girls are great when they come out.
Well, state your name, too. I know you're the gym owner.
Anthony Bucchieri. I'm the owner, built by Bucchieri, private fitness. The bigger issue I remember you guys mentioning, too, is also about the tenants on the top. So in the year I've been here, the tenants have their own spots. No one comes down to my area. The class that you're looking at at 9:00 AM is the only time of the day that I have a class that big. 5:30 in the morning and 9:00. Otherwise, it's one car in. So even if we were to have, and you needed us to get an engineer out, I know by the square footage, you only needed seven spaces. We can very clearly get seven spaces out of the area that we have. But what we're looking at right here is a class that starts from 9:00 to 10:00 in the morning. And I understand your conditions under emergency, trying to get everyone out. But they all come in at the same time. They leave at the same time. And the bigger issue going forward, I know, is the neighbors concerned about what was parked on the street. And by me having them come in, it takes the cars off the street, which was the biggest concern for the person who brought this up in the first place. But what I'm trying to say on this one is that is only one hour of the day. It's not a gym to where there's 14, 15 cars in at all hours. It's for one hour a day. So this is the one time that we have to deal with that, because I have the one busy class at 9:00. For the rest of the day, it's one, maybe two cars at a time, and the spot's allotted, counting, and then that's including my vehicle. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have about the class and how it programs and goes in, and how the class comes in and out. But the picture that Ralph took of this was of the busiest time of the day and the one hour that I have them. Just to show how everyone accommodates, parks, we have about 6 and 1/2 feet per square, each parking spot. There's about six of them in the front, and he has two on the top and two on the bottom, which are a little bit bigger, which we added in. And we have that no parking sign in front of the tenant that's to the left of me. But we've never had an issue on the top, which I know you guys had raised concern about. We wanted to make sure that. I wanted to fully make sure that you guys knew that we didn't have an issue at all. We have a good understanding. The tenants have their own spots. And there's never any confusion coming down into the parking lot where I'm located. I know another one of the board members had mentioned that. There's no confusion on the two, but what we did is we tried to do this in a way so that we could show you that at the busiest one hour of the day, that we try to make it as neat and accommodating as possible on our end, which is what I wanted to just express to you guys. So I can answer any questions you guys have about the class and anything like that as well.
Okay. I guess, should we go back out to deliberation, or does anyone have any additional questions? Any public comments? I don't see anyone. I don't see anyone on.
Brian could chat if he wanted.
Yeah, I think we're at a little disadvantage here without Brian.
He's been texting me.
But I guess.
But there's no one else up there either.
So you would like to deliberate, or?
No, do you have any additional questions, is my question?
I'll make more of a statement, Mr. Bucchieri, versus my deliberation comments. I think we have a clear picture on your function on this site. What this board's asking for and what your owner's asking for are clarity on the parking plan. I don't, and if I, again, without our planning director present to be able to answer, I can't remember the required amount of parking spots.
I think it was seven per square.
Hold on, I think it was seven or eight.
I think Brian mentioned eight.
So the fact that, you know, whatever count this is, the request of this board was to have a stamped engineering drawing with whatever the number came out at. 10, 8, 12, 15, it doesn't matter, but we didn't get that piece of information. So that's really what's lacking here. It's not about the operation of your business, and I certainly think this can all work, but it has to get done in a way that this board can feel positive about voting for something of this nature. So I'm just making that more of a statement, not as my deliberation, so.
Brian just texted me, they need eight spaces.
Eight spaces, so, you know, again, I'm just trying to be real clear. We asked for a stamped engineering drawing. We don't have it.
Okay.
Regardless of what experiment you guys did, what lines you put down showing it at peak times, what we asked for has not been fulfilled.
Okay.
So far.
On my end, is there anything I can do for?
I believe it's on your owner, but I won't speak for the whole board. Hold on, I'm going to turn it over to the chair.
Ken?
But I would like to deliberate, too, if we're going to go through that.
Yeah, no, 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 I agree. Ken, do you have any additional questions?
No, I have a statement. It's more like a deliberation statement.
Okay.
So I'm just, it looks like there's ample space for eight. Like, there's no problem with eight, and that's what he needs. That's what they need. So for me, I'm leaning towards voting for this, because I know the space is there for eight now. He crammed in 15. That's at a peak time, but by the letter of the bylaw on the law or whatever, I think he just needs eight, and the rest can park on the street. So for me, if he has a space for eight, and it looks like he clearly does, even though it's probably been long enough, whatever, if you take the totality of the space and stuff, I think he can create eight, even though it isn't written, so. I mean, I don't know, do we need to, now this will go out to Brian. Do we actually need a plan to approve?
We do.
Yeah.
You do, okay. So if we need a plan to approve, then a stamp plan, then we do.
All right. So two things. We definitely need to have an official approved plan stamped with how many legal spots you have. And the other thing is, this photo you have here, that's illegal. You can't do that. You can't have tandem stacked up three cars like that. That's not legal parking there.
Okay.
So it's those two things. You can't do that, and we need a plan stamped and approved, official, of how many legal spots that you have, and showing those lots.
Jeff?
Before we go.
I think it's been made clear to the applicant that what we asked for wasn't delivered. But I understand his point, which is trying to appease the neighbors. And if he has eight spots and 15 cars show up, and they can only take eight spots because we forced him to make full-size legal parking spaces, that might not be the best outcome for the neighborhood. So I'm just saying, we got to think about this a little more carefully. I mean, we can put our foot down and say you need 16 by 10-foot spaces, but then people are going to be parking where they shouldn't be. So I, like I said, we've made it clear that he needs an official stamped drawing, or we made that clear last meeting, and we didn't get it. But we need to make sure we understand what the impact on the neighborhood is. That's all I'm saying.
I agree, but I also think, too, we can't have that.
No, we can't have stack parking.
We can't have stacked parking, and we also have to make sure that we have legitimate parking spaces, because honestly, it's not fair to these customers who are going in if they're going to be parking so close to one another that, you know, they're going to end up with dinged cars because we didn't have, we didn't require them to prepare a plan and stick to it that has legitimate-sized parking spaces. So.
I mean, the other problem is, if two of your clients get into an accident, if one of these diagonals parked cars backs up into the side of another car, then they can come after the building owner for having illegal parking spaces.
Right.
Not that anybody would want to do that, but you're exposing yourself to a liability that you don't need to be.
So I think what we're all saying is that we need a stamp plan. And if that means that it's going to eliminate some of the parking spaces, and you end up with just eight, and that's what's required, I think I would feel more comfortable with that, especially. All right, especially where the gym owner is stating that it's really only one hour a day. You eliminated the noise issues, correct? The music and the noise issues, so.
Haven't had a problem?
Okay, all right. So basically, it's parking, and again, I really think we need that stamped engineering report with legitimate parking spaces. All right, so.
And you have him go to the mic.
Can you go to the mic, please?
I made compact cars, you know, and I think it's about six or seven of them. So, which is 7'6" wide to fit the compact cars, and that's how I created to have so many parking spot. But what I'll do, I'll let my engineer go back down there and tell me exactly what you need, the blackout of the lines, and put the right lines down.
Okay. And I believe that when he creates the plan. And I believe that when he creates the plan, if he has smaller-sized parking spaces, because they are for a compact car, I think you just label it "compact car," and then just compact cars can park in that space.
Okay.
But see what type of a plan, because you do have a lot of space there, so see what you can do as far as coming up with the plan, and maybe you can even get nine spaces, which would be better than eight, but I just prefer, and we require, that it be stamped engineering plan for the parking.
That's no problem, I can do that.
So what is our first meeting in January?
How much time do you need?
I don't know, but I haven't been able to get my comments on it.
All right, go ahead, no, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to remind the board, and the applicant, too, why are we here? We're here because this is a non-conforming lot that's in a residential one. This lot has a three-family, it has a garage that has some kind of HVAC running out of it, and then it has this gym. I can't support this on any level. I just feel like this site is way beyond what is called for in an R1, and that's what, you know, I feel like my job is, this is more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I feel like it is, parking plan or not. So, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it regardless. So that's my comments.
What if the engineer reviews the entire plan for the whole complex?
Well, I think I'd be all right with that, but I just feel like there's just, you know, and again, I go back to the minutes from 2016, there just seems to be a lot of problems with this site, and I feel like we don't have a really good handle on the overall site. We might be trying to solve the one piece of the gym, and to this business owner's credit, and he's in here trying to do the right thing, but I just think, you know, we have basically three functions going on in an R1 site. We don't have an engineered parking plan, and we don't, you know, I still don't understand what's going on with the other garage, and I just think, my thought was, the applicant was going to come back here tonight with an overall parking plan for all of 48 North Putnam Street, HVAC, three-family, and the business that Mr. Bucheri runs, his fitness center. If I were to see something like that, and there's a clear understanding, then I may be more in favor for it, but as presented, particularly without an engineered drawing parking plan, I am a no.
Okay.
So...
And I also agree with John. When you have the engineer out there, have him do the parking plan for the entire complex. So as John said, the HVAC company, the...
The HVAC is totally a ban. They come in, they spend an hour...
It doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter.
It's a whole site, we need a handle on all of 48 North Putnam Street, not just pieces of it. We need one big picture.
I thought we were dealing with the gym, now we're dealing with the whole complex.
No, we're not, though. You're asking for a finding at 48 North Putnam Street, which entails the whole site.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
And I agree, and even the residential portion, you must have designated parking spaces for those, so have the engineer mark those, and even, you know, sometimes, you know, with residential, they'll be marked for which unit parks in which space.
Right.
So if you could have the engineer do a plan for the whole complex, which will take into account the residential, the gym, and the HVAC company, and we can see the whole plan, I think most of us would feel comfortable voting yes on this.
Okay.
And you might actually pick up some more spaces.
Yes.
You know, I mean, your clients aren't...
It removes all doubt, right? Instead of us, because we don't live there, we don't worry, obviously, Mr. Bucheri's trying to run his business there, and you're trying to be an owner that has these three functions going on. But right now, we need clarity, I think, is where I'm going with it.
Okay, so, and Mr. Zickelli just texted me, the next meeting is January 13th, and he wants you to have your engineer contact him, and he will go over all the requirements with your engineer. That way, nothing will get lost in translation.
Okay.
So he'll be able to tell your engineer, "This is what we're looking for, and this is what we're requiring." That way, when you come in on the 13th, we'll know that we have a stamped plan that, you know, should pass the requirements that we've laid out for you.
Okay.
All right, so would you...
Is the 13th enough time?
Is that enough time, or do you want to go to the second meeting?
We've got Christmas and New Year's and everything else.
I should have enough time. I'll get on with it tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we continue the case on 48 North Putnam Street to our January 13, 2025 meeting.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think this gentleman has a question.
If it's okay, I brought it up last time. I just wanted to see if there was a chain of command. I know you guys, you guys can handle it. But I had brought up previously, would you be able to help me on the process in which I might be able, for the fence parking, to go to the town to try to make that like a one-hour parking along that fence on the top on the street? Is that who I would have to contact for that? Because I had thought that maybe if that was a one-hour park, and this way, people randomly in the neighborhood or such, or people just, you know, some of the construction workers, if that was open on the top, then it would create even more, because then it's in and out, and no one has to worry about parking in front of any residential houses, it's along the fence, which is where the property is.
I bet that's the answer, right on that ding.
Perfect.
I believe it's the Danvers Traffic Committee.
Yes.
Okay.
Brian said to, you will have to go in front of the select board, but your first stop is, he called it DTAC.
Yeah.
Okay. I figured if I can at least make, at least try for that, I might be able to help.
It's all the right thing, and I think we're all moving in the right direction here.
Yes.
However, and I think, Mr. Bucheri, you can probably get a sense of this, especially with the Maple Street building getting closer to opening. You know, that's going to become a much more active area, so I would think, you know, the Danvers Traffic Committee would want to possibly post signage on that road, because I feel it is going to get, you know, somewhat busy when those apartments start to fill up.
I think so, too, especially with the traffic. I'm surprised it's not even...
That's a good question to ask.
Yeah, like, something like that, I just figured maybe, like, if it's, even if it's like during business hours, like during the day, when people are at work...
Mr. Zickelli drew the planning board and helped give you a phone number or an email.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. I'd rather get that along, and then this way, it can help everybody out, especially in the neighborhood, and, you know, maybe make that easier during the hours. So I just wanted to ask you guys while I had you, because I'm not familiar with the area, not how to work with the town thing, so I do appreciate the help on that. Thank you so much for that.
And I do think if you have a plan in place, and everything is marked, the neighbors will be a little more comfortable with the situation.
You know, even though I know we've already continued this case, I guess I do have a question. I did a site visit, I've been out there, but I do not believe, and if you know, or fellow zoning board members, there's no marked street spots on North Putnam Street, is that correct?
Not that I know of.
So that may be another thing that the town decides by you bringing it to their attention, not only signage, but maybe they would put lined spots on the street.
Yeah, there's no lined spots at all, or like anything.
So it could, you know, a lot of good could come out of this, so...
Yeah, just in case, I know sometimes...
I encourage you to follow it through.
Yeah, it gets a little confusing, especially with them tearing up the road, too, some of the people don't know exactly.
Sure.
I figure this way, it eliminates someone blocking a driveway, especially in the future. I just, I would rather get ahead of it, so I do appreciate the chain of command to go for that, so thank you so much for that.
Yes, good luck.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, a motion to end our meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You, too?
Good night, Danvers. Good night, Brian.